We go right into budget items. And so we've got several items here. And so what we're going to do is I'm going to ask the clerk to read all orders. So sit back for a minute because we've got orders 181 through 187.
Order 181, approving state local EPS funding allocations for public education from kindergarten to grade 12 for Portland Public Schools for fiscal year 2021. Order 182, approving non-state funded school construction debt service for the Portland Schools for fiscal year 2021. Order 183, raising and appropriating additional local funds for the Portland Schools for fiscal year 2021. Order 184, approving state, excuse me, approving the total school operating budgets for Portland Schools for fiscal year 2021. Order 185, appropriating and raising funds for adult education for fiscal year 2021 as required by the main revised statutes titled 20A MRS subsection 8603A1. Order 186, to raise and appropriate local funds for food service in the Portland Public Schools for fiscal year 2021. Order 187, authorizing the disposition of any additional state subsidy received from the schools in fiscal year 2021, all sponsored by the Finance Committee, Councilor Nicholas Mavadonis, Junior Chair.
Thank you very much to the city clerk for reading through those. What we're going to do at this time is look to the Chair of the Finance Committee, Councilor Mavadonis, for comment. Then we'll go into a public comment period on all orders. So if you did not, if you spoke at the last hearing, we will, we'll thank you for that. Folks who have not yet had the opportunity to comment will be able to comment this evening. We'll then close the public comment period and we'll go into each item separately. So I just wanted to lay that out and thank you, Councilor Mavadonis, for giving us some comments as we go into these budget items this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief with my comments. I'll defer to the School Committee Chair, Roberto Rodriguez, or Javier Botana, the superintendent, if they would like to get into more detail for the public. What is before the council tonight are a number of orders. These are laid out by the state requirement for how we deal with school budgets. Our finance committee had the two requisite meetings, which are laid out in our charter, joint meetings between the school board and the school board's finance committee and the city council's finance committee. We had a fair amount of discussion. And in advance of that, over the several months leading up to the budgets coming forward, the mayor and I and the city manager had a number of conversations with our counterparts on the school board. At the time, we were probably talking more about revaluation and its impact than anything else. And so I want to say I really appreciate those conversations. I think they were very helpful. I really appreciate the work that the school board's finance committee and the school board did along with the administration to get to this budget. It does not have a tax levy increase, so I think that's really important for the taxpayers of Portland. I know it has not been without some pain to the school department. But I really appreciate that work. This comes to the committee, the council with a committee unanimous committee recommendation. And the mayor, who's ex officio on the committee, also concurs or conferred in that, in that vote. So I will just say that from a kind of an introductory perspective and see if Javier or Roberto would like to add anything.
Thank you, Councilor. I, I'll let the superintendent speak. I, I was fortunate to present the budget at the last meeting. I was fortunate to have the opportunity to speak and share some thoughts. So I'll let the superintendent speak if he has anything else he wants to share. But appreciate all the positive comments, Councilor. And likewise, we, we enjoyed the process and, you know, given the difficult circumstances, we appreciate all those words. Superintendent?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Councilor Mavadonis. We are prepared in our, in our conversations ahead of the meeting with city staff. We were asked to be prepared to do a brief presentation. I recognize that most of the council was very engaged throughout the, the budget process. So it is mainly very familiar to you, but we thought that it would probably make sense to spend just a few minutes going through a couple of key points around the budget. So if you are okay with that, we'll proceed. And Miranda Fasulo, our Executive Director for Budget and Finance, is prepared to share her screen. And so we have a brief PowerPoint that we'll walk through. So Miranda, if you can go to the agenda itself, what we want to do today is just review a little bit of the budget process. I think you heard already from Councilor Mavadonis around the city side of that. So we want to just do a brief overview of the different steps along the way. Then Miranda is going to lead us through overview of the budget itself. And we'll tag team on that. And then obviously, we look forward to discussing any questions that we may have leading up to your vote. So the next slide, you can see the sort of the trajectory of our budget process, which as Councilor Mavadonis mentioned, you know, the context changed radically around the middle of March. So we started with a budget that was informed by those conversations that we had been having with city staff and leadership leading up to that. And my original budget was presented, had a 3% tax increase, $122.3 million budget that we submitted originally to the board. That included a recommendation to reconfigure our elementary schools. And then in the rapid succession of events that followed that with COVID, we decided to pull back on that, keep the budget at that point where it was, but without the elementary reconfiguration, which meant that some of the improvements in our investments in our school district that we had hoped to do would be put on hold while we dealt with the more immediate issues of the pandemic and really had an opportunity to engage the community in that larger conversation, which we're committed to doing over the next year as we move forward, looking at the 22 school year. We then, in early May, after putting the budget process on hold, came back to the, the Finance Committee with a proposal that reduced the budget by incorporating some CARES funding and some adjustments that had happened along the way and reducing it to a 0% tax increase. The Finance Committee proposed a budget to the, to the board that had a slight increase, up to a 0.5% tax increase, which ultimately did not move forward, you know, through the discussions that we had with the city as well as with the board. And so we settled on the budget that you have in front of you today, which is a budget for $119.9 million. As Councilor Mavadonis mentioned, that does not require an increase in, in taxes for this year. There were some changes in terms of how we achieved that, which is probably more pertinent to the board than it is to the council. So I'm not going to go into that, but you can see there some of the changes that occurred along the way. Next slide, please. Just the, this basically summarizes what Councilor Mavadonis said, so I don't want to go into it any further. And so just the steps that happened, engaging with the council. And again, I would like to thank the council and city staff for their guidance and support through this process. And I found that to be extremely productive and I think it led to a solid process. So I'm going to turn it over then to Miranda to walk you through some of the specifics and then I'll come back on to talk about some of the changes.
So thank you, Superintendent, and good evening, everybody. So I'm just going to start off with a quick budget overview, which will be a refresher for most of you, although it has changed a little bit since you last saw this at the, at the Finance Committee meeting on May 14. Um, so our board recommended budget for FY '21, as the superintendent mentioned, is $119.9 million, which reflects a 2.1% increase over this year, or FY '20, and a 0% school tax rate increase. And just for context, the FY '20 budget was $117.4 million. It represented an increase of 6.2% over FY '19 and a 4.9% school tax rate increase. So staying at the summary level here, but with some more specific figures, we are of course proposing a balanced budget with both expenses and revenue increasing by 2.1%. As I mentioned, in a dollar terms, that amounts to an increase of about $2.5 million over the current year budget. So the property tax levy is up by 1.1%, but I just want to reiterate from the prior slide that the property tax rate has not increased. So the increase to the levy that you see here is purely a result of the estimated increase to property tax valuation in the city, which we estimated by utilizing figures shared with us by the City Finance Office and the city. So moving on to just a little more detail on the revenue side, this is just to give you a general sense of our funding picture. So 79% of our budget comes from property taxes, 16% from state EPS, and 5% from all other sources. And for some more specifics on our revenue figures, I already talked about the property tax levy, so I'll skip over that one. But with respect to our state funding, we were fortunate this year to see an increase of about $1 million in our EPS. And this was driven by a combination of several factors, most notably the governor's supplemental budget, improvements made to our reporting at the state level of teacher years of experience, changes made by the state to the EPS formula itself, as well as our enrollment figures, which included additional, additional pre-K classrooms. And to offer just a little more background on our other revenue sources, federal revenue is primarily food services, school lunch program revenue, and as well as federal Medicaid reimbursements. Those are the two main factors, main sources of revenue that comprise our federal revenue. Local non-tax revenue is tuition, both K-12 and adult ed, and it also includes food services paid meals. Other state revenue is state funding outside of EPS, and that includes state agency client reimbursements and adult ed subsidy from the state, which was actually up $100,000 in FY '21 as well. And fund balance, the fund balance that you see here reflects the total across all of our funds, with $500,000 in the general fund, $310,000 in food services, and $20,000 in adult ed. And the increase that you see here is actually in food services, and that's for a one-time equipment purchase. Moving on to the expenditure side of the house, so it's no surprise, I'm sure, to any of you, the majority of our budget is salaries and benefits. And that accounts for about 79% of our budget and contractual services, debt services, I'm sorry, debt service and supplies split the rest of our budget. And then for some more details on the expenditure side, our salaries and benefits expenses are up by about 1.7 million or 1.9% for FY '21. And, you know, with respect to that, again, a reminder for, for many of you, but I do want to make sure it's clear to everyone that this budget reflects a shift of approximately 1.3 million in salary and benefits costs for custodial staff off of the local budget and onto federal CARES Act funding. And CARES funding is managed as a federal grant, and it's therefore, you know, not reflected in this budget, either in the cost side or in revenue. So I just want to make sure that's clear, and we'll talk a little bit more about the CARES funding in a moment. And finally, on the non-salary side for expenditures, we're seeing an increase of about $750,000 or 3% there utilities, and that's primarily natural gas and electricity. I'm seeing the biggest increase percentage-wise, and it does look like a big increase, up 13% over the FY '20 budget, but it's actually only up by about 3% over our 19, FY '19 actuals. So a big part of that is really a trueing up in FY '21 of that budget. And some other noteworthy areas of increase in our non-salary expenses include transportation services, specifically metro and crossing guards, recycling, property and liability insurance, anticipated contract pre-K partners, as well as some new curriculum materials. And so with that, I'll turn it back over to the superintendent to talk about some of the key programmatic adjustments that were made in this budget and to talk as well about some of the challenges ahead that we see as we move forward into what's sure to be an uncertain future.
Great, thank you, Miranda. So we just wanted to talk briefly about some of the most notable changes in the budget, sort of at the programmatic level. These are things that you may have heard from constituents about, and so we wanted to just spend a couple of minutes walking through some of this. One, so we're going to do first the reductions and then the investments, the new investments. So in the reductions, one of the changes that we have is we've eliminated our fourth and fifth grade world language, which is Spanish. And so that does not affect what happens at the middle school or the high school, but it is a reduction in the access to world language for, for English-speaking students. So we also just made some staffing adjustments based on enrollment. And so there are some reductions at the high school, primarily of that, and also some central office and operational reductions, including a custodian and then contingencies and contracts that we had. We made an across-the-board 3% reduction to the supply requests that we received from our, from our staff and cost centers. And we also implemented through the budget process. We originally had a $40,000 reduction in athletics and co-curricular, and that increased to $140,000 in reductions to our athletic programming, most of it in activities that were either undersubscribed or positions that were found to be not fully needed. And so we made those reductions. We still have, as you saw in the first slide where we talked about the back and forth through the budget process, we still have about $400,000 in reductions that we are currently working to identify. First line for that is reductions in cost of living adjustments for our staff. Obviously, all of those require discussion with our collective bargaining units and in some cases renegotiating their contracts. So that is work that's in progress. And we have, with the help of the board, identified some other lines that we would be able to tap for the difference between what we're able to reduce in COLAS and that, that total of 400,000. So next slide, Miranda, please. These are some of the investments that are new in the budget for this year. We are expanding our pre-kindergarten program. As you know, from last year, the board made a commitment to do this over five years to get to universal four-year-old pre-kindergarten access. And so there is an expansion on, in this year's budget of two classrooms in pre-kindergarten. I do want to point out, Miranda mentioned this in her comments about the revenue, that that is offset entirely by, by state funding, EPS funding. So part of that increase that you saw of $1 million in EPS was driven by the expansion of pre-kindergartens. If we didn't expand pre-kindergarten, we would still be down that revenue. So it would basically wash. We've, we're making some modest investments in scaling up our core instruction, particularly around early literacy and elementary mathematics. So that is $125,000 new in our budget. We have a very successful and strong program for students with autism in our elementary and middle school, but we have not had many students in, with those needs at the high school. But those numbers, as a group of students are moving up through the middle school, are increasing. And so we've needed to add some capacity at the high school as well as some elementary capacity to, to, to deal with the growing numbers of students. We have made some nursing adjustments to make sure that all of our schools have the prescribed nursing support. So that is reflected in here. And we are losing federal funding in our title programs and also our costs are increasing because those are primarily staffed positions that are funded through the title funds. And so we kind of reached the point where we really need to make some adjustments. And so in order to preserve those investments, we've moved about $650,000 over to the general fund. And so that allows us to be able to sustain the supports that are in our Title I schools, particularly important this year, given the fact that, you know, those are investments in our schools with the highest percentage of students with, who are economically disadvantaged. And so we need to be able to continue those supports. So, thank you. Next slide, the, just a little bit more detail on the CARES funding, which Miranda mentioned. We receive, expect to receive about $1.9 million in federal funding through the CARES, the CARES grant. And so we've dedicated about $1.3 million of that to be able to move some custodial salaries over. And that obviously relieved the pressure on the local budget. So we have that in for one year, and it also left us $650,000 reserve, which we hopefully can preserve and use for carrying half of those salaries into the next year or use it as a contingency fund as, you know, as new expenses arise this year. And then last, just, you know, we recognize that we've had to do some things this year to be able to, to bring you a budget that is, that calls for no tax increase. But, you know, we, you know, continue to be concerned about some things. And so we felt it was important to sort of bring to the council that, you know, going forward, we're, you know, we're projecting a budget that would climb with just normal escalation of salaries and benefits and debt service, as well as rolling those salaries off of, off of the CARES grant would be expected to grow to $126 million. And that's with some fairly optimistic assumptions about state funding, which may or may not come, come to fruition for next year. So we are very concerned about the impact of, you know, any recisions in, you know, revenue from the, from the state and what that would cause to our budget. So we wanted to make sure that you, that you knew that. We have tried to maintain some flexibilities, I mentioned in the conversation about CARES, in terms of reserving that $650,000 and trying to preserve it to the extent possible to sort of push that forward into next year as well as, and probably more importantly, some of those key structural and programmatic changes that I mentioned briefly, the elementary reconfiguration, which was something that we paused on this year when COVID struck, but that we are committed to looking at going forward, which in our, in our original plans would be $1 million in savings. And we are also looking at our middle school model and trying to figure out a way to be able to preserve some of what we love about that model while at the same time being able to reduce some costs. And you saw some adjustments in our high school staffing, and we are committed to working towards a more sort of predictable formula for staffing our high schools. And that is work that we've already started this year that yielded those three FT reductions and that we intend to continue going forward. So that's really it from us. So we're just here to answer any questions that you may have. And again, thank you very much to the full council, especially to the Finance Committee for the guidance and, and discussions along the way. I think we've had a very productive budget process this year, and I'm very grateful for that, as I know the full board is as well.
Thank you, Superintendent Botana and Chair Rodriguez. Before I move us over to public comment and then back into council process where there will be an opportunity for questions to both of you from the council, Councilor Mavadonis, do you have anything more to add at this time? No, okay, great. Okay, so, so again, thank you for the review and the additional information. We've got a lot before us in terms of budget items this evening, so let's take our time and work through them. And as we do, we're going to first go to public comment. And so just a reminder that anybody who spoke to the school budget at our last meeting is, has, is considered somebody who's already spoken to this item. So if you have not yet had a chance to offer public comment on this item, we would be happy to hear from you. Same rules as always. Please give us your name and address, and we'll give you three minutes. And I do, I'm just going to flag it with the city clerk. I think you've got, you've got something to add.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. I just wanted to state that the only public comment at the last city council meeting was from George Rowe. He was the only one that spoke on the school budget.
Great, so we heard from George last, last time. We will not hear from George this time then, compliant with our rules. And if there are other folks in the community who would like to speak, I've got, we'd love to hear from you. So we'll go first to Stephen Scharf.
Stephen Scharf of Cumberland Avenue in Portland. I, I just want to start by noting that the superintendent noted that the tax-supported part of the budget is, is not going up. It's, as he noted or in the presentation, he noted that the tax rate will not go up, but the actual tax-supported part of the budget is going up by almost a million dollars. And so people don't understand that concept, that, that is an additional million dollars in tax-supported funding to the budget. And he also talked about the fact that it's being backfilled by federal money. I'm really concerned about that backfilling of the budget because that money's going to go away after this year, and we're going to be looking at a very large hole based on that and, and the other factors. I, I, going from 119 million to almost 120 million, $126 million budget next year just is mind-blowing that we even think about that. We also need to look at what's really going to happen in September. We're going to open up these schools. I fully support going back to school and opening them up to, as normal places of operation. But are we really going to have 7,000 students come back to school in this, in the fall or 6,700 students? I, I really don't think so. I think our school population is going to be significantly decreased, and we're not going to need all the staff we actually have. And we have to look at that issue as we go along. Last thing I wanted to speak to is the reference to the pre-K funding being paid for, 100% being paid for by the state. I have not analyzed that part of it per se, but if that's being funded above what I call above the line of the funding formula, before you process it through the formula, if it is above the line expenses referred to, then it is, we are only getting 15% of that money. We only get 15% of what we say, what, what the state says it costs to educate kids in the city of Portland. And so anything that is above the, the processing of the funding formula, we only get 15%. we only get 15%. So unless this is actual additional money that they're sending us directly to those pre-K students, we're not getting. And that's all my comments on the budget. Thanks.
Perfect timing. Thank you. Okay. And we'll next go to Christian. Christian, I think you're muted.
Sorry about that. Chris Bigazinski, 73 All the Street. Excuse my ignorance on this issue, but I would like to know whether or not there is a line item for SROs or a police contract with the public schools in Portland, and whether or not that's been taken into consideration with this financing and breaking that contract and eliminating SROs. I just don't know where the money is coming from, but I think that that's an important consideration. I've emailed the school board about this, and that could be a cost savings for the school. Even in the best of times, SROs are a faulty system. I grew up in Chicago. I lived in Chicago. And the Chicago Public School System, even in the best of times, SROs did not provide any safety benefits and actually harmed the health of students. And I'm just wondering if that's been addressed by the school board or the city council. And thank you.
Thank you very much. And I suspect that will be followed up with council questions. And I am going to go next to Jess Knox.
Hi, Jess Knox, 76 Old Birch Lane in Portland. Just piggybacking on the last comment, I'd like to have the council and the superintendent explore whether in this budget are the funds that are needed to solve the disproportionate discipline issues, the data that's come out of Portland High School and Cassaway High School, which are biased against a number of students of color, ELL students and others. And so I'd like to hear about specifically that those funds are, are being tended to, so that the superintendent and all the rest of the staff have what they need to get that done.
Thank you. And next we will go to Ken Capron.
Good evening, Council. Ken Capron, 1375 Forest Avenue. I have three questions. Partly, particularly directed towards Ms. Vasulo. Coming from Cambridge Public Schools, as you did, Deputy Director there, to Portland, have you noticed any major variation between what they did and what we do? That would be something we should pay attention to. Any red flags that came to your mind when you came here? Secondly, I didn't see anything in the, in this budget to account for the foundation, Portland Public School Foundation, which our dear mayor used to handle. And so I don't know where the income and the expense in the future of those funds stands. And the last question is, are there any potential savings you know of or anticipate, which could be achieved if it weren't for political influence? That's it.
Thank you, Ken. And is there any additional public comment this evening? George, I see your hand up, but you did speak at the last opportunity. And so I'm going to, consistent with our rules, I'm going to thank you for your comment at our last meeting. And I'm going to go ahead and ask for Madeline Maycomer.
Sorry about that. I just also wanted to double down on the discussion about defunding the police in the public schools, that that would be a wonderful way to redistribute some of the budget. But also was wondering if in future meetings, there might be an opportunity to have a chat room or some way that we could see how many other city people are participating. Not being able to be bodies in a room is a little difficult, but I am very thankful to have this access because I know that me and many other people might not be able to attend without it. But I wonder if there's a way to maybe make it so it felt more participatory for, for everyone? Just a small suggestion. Oh, and I'm at Forest St. Lawrence Street.
Thank you. Thanks for here. Okay. Are there any folks who would like to speak to the FY21 Portland Public Schools budget? Who have not yet had the opportunity to speak? Seeing no more hands on the attendees side, I will close public comment on this item. And oh, well, we've got, we've got George's hand up. But again, we, I'm going to look for a little bit of guidance from Corporation Council on this one. We, we, we do have rules that govern talking twice.
That's correct, Mayor. We had indicated that you could speak once. And according to the clerk's records, Mr. Rowe spoke at the last meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we, I'm going to hop back over to the council, and we're going to begin to take these one by one. And we'll start with Order 181. Do I have a motion?
Move passage.
Second. We've got Councilor Mavadonis with a second by Councilor Costa. And I'll ask for any public, council comment on this item.
Mayor can.
Yes, Councilor Mavadonis.
Do you want to try to get the answers to the questions under this first one?
Yes, happy to. I've taken note of questions here. Do you, do you want to begin that, that questioning to the superintendent?
Or you can, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure the superintendent got a chance to answer them.
Yep, okay.
I took notes as well. So whatever makes the most sense, Mayor.
Superintendent, I'd be happy for you to, I'm going to look around for council nodding of heads, but we've just got a handful of questions from the community, starting with SROs, making our way down through some of these questions, Mayor May, you know, we've got the variations between Cambridge and Portland, the Foundation for Portland Public Schools, political influence, and then finally defunding the police as a concept within Portland Public Schools budget. So if you'd be willing to touch on those things, then we can go into council comment and question as we make our way through this and the rest of the items.
The only, the only other one that I had was Steve's question about pre-kindergarten.
Oh, thanks.
That is, that is direct dollars that comes, the 290-some thousand dollars that we will get this year. So it's not 15% of 293,000. If we were to not have pre-K this year, that we would actually lose that amount in our, in our revenue stream. So we wouldn't lose 15%, maybe we would lose the amount. Regarding the SRO, there is $140,000 in our budget that pays for the, the two SROs, one at Dearing High School, one at Portland High School. For those who have been following the, you know, the, the conversation around that, the board does have a workshop scheduled tomorrow, has a first read on a resolution to discontinue our memorandum of understanding with the Police Department and recoup those dollars for other purposes. So that conversation is going on at the board level. That will, that there's a first read and a workshop and public hearing on it tomorrow. And then we expect the board to act on that resolution at a special meeting on June 30. So that is, that's a conversation that's going on. I, I know that Mr. Knox asked the question about whether we had everything that we needed to be able to reduce those discipline disparities. That is work that we are committed to doing. I, I would not say that we have everything that we need. It starts with people's hearts and minds, and then it also, you know, follows through with resources and alternatives. So, you know, that is something that we're committed to doing. And, you know, is not something that just happened one year, and that can be attributed to any, any changes. That is, you know, systematically something that has happened in our schools for a long period of time happens across the country and is, you know, born from, you know, from lack of resources to some extent, but also many other institutional practices, biases, discipline practices and protocols and things like that. So I won't say that we have everything that we need, but I do, I can say that we are committed to, to changing that narrative in Portland.
I will let Miranda talk about the differences between Cambridge and Portland. I know they spend a lot more money. But besides that, I don't know what, what the differences are. So I'll come back to that. But just the foundation, the only contribution that the school district makes to the foundation is the salary for the executive director. That is articulated in a memorandum of understanding between the school district and the foundation, which is a separate corporate entity. And that is, the school district's contribution has been since the inception of the, of the foundation. And so that's, that's captured in our budget. If you look at our personnel, it actually is reported under the superintendent's office. So the executive director for the foundation is one of the FTE that shows up when you look at our budget book under the superintendent's office. And then I don't, I can't think of anything for, to Mr. Capron's question around savings, but for political influences. So there is nothing that I can think of that is specifically in the budget for, you know, something that is, you know, politically motivated. So, you know, that's, I think, the answer to those questions. And then Miranda, you can regale us with the Cambridge versus Portland.
Mayor, Mayor, can I, can I just raise a quick issue before we go further? We, I'm sure other councils got a similar email, but I just wanted to just confirm about the public comment piece of this. I know at the last meeting, we did, you know, I don't know if it was public comment on whether we were going to take this item up, or can anyone confirm that?
Yep. So, oh, am I muted? Okay. So I suspect this is why we have two hands up. I would like to extend great apologies to Mr. Rowe. I believe I was in error in thinking that you made a comment on the school's budget, when in fact, you made comment on the scheduling of the public hearing for the school budget. And so what I'd like to do is ask you to accept my apology and invite you to speak. And then we'll go back into the council portion of the work, invite Miranda, the Finance Director for Portland Public Schools, to answer the question and move forward. So my apologies to the council and to Mr. Rowe. And if you're still with us, Mr. Rowe, please, again, accept my apologies, and we'd love to hear from you.
Mr. Rowe, I'm sorry too. I was mistaken. And I fully accept that. I'm sorry about that.
Apologies accepted. George Rowe, 28 Hanover Street. Thank you to the members of the council for recognizing the sort of little point there, the miscue. I had two areas that I just wanted to quickly focus on. I believe the gist of the superintendent and Ms. Vasulo's comments were that the facilities maintenance reductions in the budget of $775,000 is dollar for dollar being recouped by federal CARES funding. But it's not entirely clear that that's the case. And I just want to make sure, sure, you know, there has been so much discussion for years, since I've been in Portland at least, about our schools deferring critical maintenance and creating, you know, basically more trouble down the road. So I just want to make sure that that $775,000, which is a lot, the largest reduction in any line item under the state funding categories, is definitely not meaning we're deferring facilities, critical facilities maintenance, but simply that, that, those expenses of now being picked up by the CARES funding. I also, and I've said this on a number of occasions, the Foundation for Portland Public Schools, which used to employ our mayor, is not listed as a, as a cost center anywhere in the budget. It is, just doesn't make any sense to me why the public doesn't get a separate broken-out line item for that money. We have a memorandum of understanding with the 501(c)(3). We pick up the full salary, the very generous benefits package of the executive director of the Port, the Foundation for Portland Public Schools. We also pick up a raft of administrative expenses in terms of office space rental, phones, some IT support. You know, if you actually fully cost that out, what that would cost for a third party to, to, you know, provide those services, it's substantial. And so I just think that we're owed a line item. It's not, I don't consider it part of the superintendent's office, if that's where it's buried in the budget, because in my view, it is something that the superintendent, to my knowledge, has no direct supervision over this individual, who takes their direction from the Board of Directors of the Foundation for Portland Public Schools. So the citizens of Portland just deserve to know exactly how much upfront money, or, you know, sort of whatever in lieu of costs that the, that the school system is paying. And certainly, I think that should have been, there should have been a reduction in that, just like the reductions in all the other line items to cover, you know, this pandemic response. Thank you.
Unmute myself. Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Okay, going, we'll go back to leadership of Portland Public Schools for continued response to questions that have been asked.
So I guess I'll, I'll pick up with the questions that were previously asked. So just before I respond to the Cambridge question, I wanted to say a little bit more about the pre-K, just with the kind of technical specifics on, on how that works. So although it is true that at the end of the day, we only receive approximately 15, 16% of our total allocation from the state, there's no part of that formula in terms of the math that actually applies a percentage to our allocation. The way it's actually calculated is there's an allocation that the state calculates, and then from that, they subtract our local required contribution. So in the case of pre-K, if we actually didn't have those pre-K classrooms, we would have fewer enrolled students by about 64, because there's actually four new classrooms counted in our EPS formula this year, our allocation would go down. From that, the exact same amount of local contribution would be subtracted. So in that case, it is complete, exact, one-for-one, dollar-for-dollar savings on the funding that we do get for each pre-K student in the EPS formula. So I'm happy to talk to the constituent more about that offline, but I just wanted to make sure that was clear to everyone, kind of from the technical side. And in terms of Cambridge, I mean, I don't have a ton to say about that, other than, you know, probably the biggest thing that, you know, that I saw coming here is, you know, for a pretty similar sized district with similar demographics, you know, the budget in Cambridge, when I left, was about 200 million. And we've got 120 million here. So for, you know, the biggest takeaway that I'd say is, you know, how much we are able to do here in Portland with a lot less in terms of resources. So, you know, I don't, I don't think I would need to speak too much more to that right now. But that's kind of biggest, biggest contrast that I've noticed from day one. So I'll turn back to the superintendent. I don't know if you want to respond to the latest questions? Or actually, do you want me to respond to them?
Yeah, if you could, because the other question that I noted from Mr. Rowe is the, the reduction in the facilities budget. I don't have anything to add on the foundation. The foundation, you know, right now, that's where we put it. I hear his point, and that's something that we can discuss and see if it makes sense to create a separate cost center within the district. But that's really all that's in there right now. So, and I do believe that the foundation in its own, you know, required as a, as a separate body in their report, they capture all of those expenses and resources as part of that. So, so if you could just answer the 775.
Yep. So in the cost center summary that he's referring to in the budget book on page eight, that is reflective of the custodial costs that were shifted off of the local budget and on to federal CARES funding. And it is not reflective of any sort of reduction to our, you know, maintenance program. It's just a shift in, in funding source. So you're correct in that, in that position.
Thank you very much for responding to those questions from the public. And so we will go back to council comment on this item, order 181. Is there any council comment on this item? Councilor Ray.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Miranda. Thank you, Chair Rodriguez, for, for presenting this all again tonight. I wanted to just take a moment to say, Miranda, you're a wonderful addition to this conversation. I really have appreciated the presentation of the budget and the way that you have done it and the way that you've made it so very digestible and easy to understand. So thank you very much for your work here. I also wanted to just, I want to ask a quick question, and that was that if we, so the CARES Act funding isn't reflected really in the budget. If we were to throw that in there, what is the total increase over last year's budget, both in terms of dollars and then in terms of like, what is the percentage increase? And I know it's not affecting the taxes, the tax less, so I just wanted to, it's not going to have a tax impact for people, but I just wanted to kind of know what the true increase is.
So quick math, just now, four and a half million or so, and 3.37 or so percent.
Okay. Thank you. And I do fully understand that that money, you know, it's not necessarily there for next year. I appreciate the way that you are trying to work to save any excess that you might get in the CARES Act funding over what you've already allocated to try to offset next year, but I just wanted to kind of have those figures for my own, for my own education. The final comments I just wanted to make, I thought that the superintendent handled the question about discipline disparities and whether or not the school department has the resources to make it even right now incredibly well by saying that this is, this is not something that you can simply quickly allocate some funds to and cure. This is something we are dealing with across our systems in the United States, and it's going to take more than some new FTEs or budget funds to right the wrongs of hundreds of years of systemic racism. So I appreciated his comments there, and I wanted to say that I thought the superintendent spoke very well to this point at a protest earlier this month also. And in hearing him talk about the difficulties of, of trying to create equity and his frustrations at not having achieved it yet, I, I, I was very proud of your honesty and forthrightness and, and the way that you spoke to that, and I think it's really important for our community. So thank you for that, too. And I guess the final thing I wanted to say is we have been getting these emails and obviously comments tonight about, please don't approve a budget that has SROs in it. And I just wanted to make the point, and someone can certainly correct me if I'm wrong about this, but we approve an amount. The school department, I know, is already planning to have continued conversations around equity, to have continued conversations around things like police and how police are incorporated into schools, just as we as a council are going to continue to have these difficult conversations that have, have been made so very apparent that we need to have them with invinciblely. And if they were to choose at some point to change how any of their funds were going to be allocated, they can do that. We are, we are approving an amount, and when the city votes on an amount at the primary, at the election in July, they will be approving an amount. And should the school board and school department decide that there's a better way to allocate some of those funds moving forward, they can make that choice. So I just wanted to make sure that's clear to the public, that these are ongoing conversations. I know our school board is very focused on equity. I know they will have these tough conversations, and I guess I want them to know I support them and am happy to offer support to them in any way I can as they try to navigate these issues and as we try to navigate these issues, and, and hopefully we can do some of that in partnership. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Ray. Councilor Chong. Welcome back.
Thank you. So I just, I jumped on around about 20 minutes ago, so I didn't hear everything, but I heard about the Cambridge analysis and about whether the school department had enough funds to address some of the discipline racial disparities in the Portland school system. And so I understand that we can't unravel systemic, you know, disparities overnight, but you know, we've had a very pro-friendly school board, and I'm just wondering, is this, you know, some kind of report or analysis or investigation? Could that be funded by the school foundation if it's something that you don't, you know, the school hasn't allocated for? Because if the school foundation is looking to create equity and parity, is that something that they can go after grants to make that happen? So that's, that's just one idea. The second piece is, I think it's great to compare one school system with another, but there's a huge disparity between Cambridge, Massachusetts and Portland, Maine, in that Cambridge, Massachusetts, when I did some basic research, it's the most expensive place, one of the most expensive places in the entire country. It's about 80% more expensive in, in a cost per living compared to Portland, whereas it's, Portland is only about, based on this website, it's only about 6% more compared to Lewiston. And Lewiston just reported they're going to have a decrease in funding, and when I look at their school rates and their demographics, it's almost identical to Portland in that they've got about 50% of their population is multicultural ESL, and their test scores are about the same as ours, whereas their cost per student is much lower than ours. And so if we're going to compare, I think we should be comparing two apples to apples as opposed to one state over another. That could be, you know, misinforming if you've got one wealthy, you know, city like Cambridge compared to Portland. It would be like saying, you know, let's compare Portland to Cape Elizabeth and see if there's racial equity among all that stuff. You might have similar demographics, but if the median household is much, much higher and their average, you know, house is worth about $800,000, whereas in Portland, it's about 320,000, it's an absolute extreme outlier in comparison. So I just wanted to raise that. But I want to thank you for your budget and, you know, the city council, basically at the end of the day, all we can do is come up with a number that we agree or not agree with. All the policies are on the school committee side and how they address racial equity and disparities in discipline and how kids are advanced, that's all on the school committee side. So, but I want to thank you for the presentation.
I don't know that, that Councilor Chong was here, that, that the comparison to Cambridge was in response to a question that was asked by, by somebody during the testimony. We did not bring that up.
Thank you. Okay, and next I'll go to Councilor Thibodeau.
Are we doing just general comment on all of these items right now, or can I, is it fair game?
Well, technically, we're taking each order one at a time. We'll vote on each order, so you can speak to each specific order, or you can make a general comment.
I'll speak every time then. I, I just say, I just want to thank the school department and then also the school committee as well for all their good work. I was at most of the meetings. I thought this was a good process, and I want to thank the superintendent for his recognition of kind of the challenge that we're all in. So I appreciate, I really do appreciate that and, and grateful to have him, have him kind of take a leadership role in that, and just really grateful for that. And I also just wanted to say that I too share the concerns about next year, and I said this at the committee level, but I just, I, I think we're, if we continue on the path that we're going, I think we are going to have difficult budget challenges. And I just want to make sure that as we think about this year, I think we kind of have not a free year, but we do have some funding from additional sources. My hope is that we'd have that funding next year, but I would hate to see us with a large gap to fill next year if we don't. And I think the public should be prepared for that, prepare for the worst and, and hope for the best here. And I think that sounds like what we're doing, which is why I'm going to support this tonight. But again, I just want to extend my, my thank yous to both the superintendent, the school board chair Roberto, and, and then my colleagues. And of course, Miranda, you're over there. I was, I was looking over here on my screen, but you're over there. Welcome to you as well, and, and thanks for all your work.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Ali.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too want to thank the superintendent and Chair Rodriguez, and then the finance committee of the school side and that of the C side. This year, we've had like a streamlined process where they reach out to all of us and access for our feedback on some issues. So thank you. Is it okay to add the superintendent to talk a little bit about something?
Yes, it is.
Superintendent, as per my daytime job, there was a time that I did participated in, in a, like a, a group that you have brought in a consultant to look at the, the achievement gap. And do you want to talk about how the process went and where we are in that? With an organization from Pennsylvania.
I actually can't think of anybody from Pennsylvania that has done anything for us other than the facilities and enrollment study that we had last year. So that was, as you know, our year-long effort to try to figure out if our high schools, if our, if we had too many schools. So I'm not exactly sure. I know that that's not what you're asking. Are you asking about our equity audit?
Yes, please.
Okay. So we, we have, I guess, two years ago now, we brought in the Equity Assistance Center out of the, it's a federally funded, it's a federally funded center that supports districts across the region on issues of equity, and so there's no cost associated with that. And they helped us to do, you know, an intensive look at our policies and practices. The school board's policy committee is currently engaged in doing a review of policies that were recommended by that audit to be reviewed. So things like our, you know, this, our discipline policies, our, you know, bullying policies, things along those lines, as well as our sexual harassment, things like that that we are currently engaged in reviewing. And they also did an intensive look at a number of schools to see what were practices that actually enabled, you know, equitable results and what were some of the practices that hindered that. And so we are, you know, as a result of that, we've built structures to, to try to do more of the things that enable, and we do some of the things that disable. And so some of those are at the policy level, as I mentioned, and some of them are matters of practice as well. Wasn't really prepared to talk about that, but I, I can, you know, provide the council with additional information from the equity audit that the, that the EAC did, if that would be helpful.
Yeah, thank you. I just ask so that the members of the public will know that there is something going on around that equity issues that we have, you know. So thank you for your leadership and Madam Mayor, thank you.
Yeah, and thank you for mentioning that. We have a report to the board tomorrow as part of our board focus on educational issues. We're doing a deep dive into all of the work that we've been doing around equity, so we'll highlight that and all of the other things that we put in place, including our work on student voice and issues like that, so.
Thank you.
All right. Do you mind if I jump in real quick? Superintendent, do you mind also, when you share that information, include, which I thought was where Councillor Ali was going to get to, the Bar Foundation study that we did? I think that that ties in also to some of the work that we're doing, and it's also some of the work that was grant funded that allowed us to look at our work in equity and drive our equity work forward. So I think that would be helpful for the council to take a look at as well.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Thank you both, and thank you, Councillor Ali. We'll go next to Councillor Costa.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to say thank you to all of the staff in particular, put a tremendous amount of work into all of the budget development this year. And thank you, of course, to the school board and our colleagues on the school finance committee. You know, I, I won't get too much into the weeds of this. I, I think the one thing that I'll add is, I think it's important to acknowledge sort of a lot of the frustrations that all of us, but particularly the staff have as a result of the pandemic and how that has really, you know, sort of affected a tremendous amount of good work that I think hasn't just occurred this year. You know, but I think for a lot of us, we've been building towards a lot of really positive proactive things in our budgeting over the last several years. And so I, I do want to say, you know, that we all recognize that there's, there's a lot that's sort of left on the table for all of us now. There's a whole host of things that we would really like to see addressed and that we thought we were going to be pretty well positioned to be able to address this year, which unfortunately, it's just not in the cards with everything that's been happening in the world. And, you know, again, in particular, that loss and that burden falls on the staff that do all of the work of developing an entire budget, only to basically have to throw it overboard as soon as it was presented. So I do just want to acknowledge all of that. I do want to acknowledge all of the conversations that preceded our formal budget conversations this year. And, you know, I, I hope that we're all able to move forward productively and hopefully to get back to having some of the more exciting and far-reaching sort of policy discussions in, in the years to come. But thank you for all the work, and I'll try not to talk to any of the other orders, but I'll just say that I do support this budget, just like I did that finance committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Costa. Councillor Duson. Jill?
Hi, Ray. I had a contact, supposedly contactless delivery come, so I had to answer the door. So I, I, and I'm sorry, I had to miss part of Councillor Costa's comments. I think what I, two things. One, I want to also thank the school board for this process and our finance committee for this process. I want to say that I had expressed and heard others express the same worries about the gap, the potential gap that's created by moving positions over to the CARES funding. And I really appreciate the slide project, the slides that show that you're, you're fully accounting for that, you're highlighting those risks, and also highlighting your areas of possible mitigation of those risks, that you, you know, you, you're doing it eyes wide open and holding out opportunities for being able to mitigate it if, if the worst happens. So there's no tax impact of the budget, but there are risk impact based on the, the ways in which you've had to be creative to put this budget together, and you account for those risks in this live presentation. So I really appreciated that. The other thing I hadn't intended to comment on, but the conversation went in this direction, is I have watched and, and respected the way in which the school board is working through, specific to its, its own policies and data to get to, to create responses that are tied to your own results, I guess is what I'm trying to say, delving down into the details about how are the policies that we've passed and that we've worked on over the years, how they've been implemented, and to, and being very wide open about, let's keep reviewing those, because it doesn't do you any good and make good policies if you don't go back and check on them every time to, to make sure they're being implemented properly and to revise them as needed. So the other thing I wanted to ask about is, or I had some concerns about, and so I wanted to be reminded of how the process works. And... And it is in relation to order, the last order on the list. One. I think it's 193. It's the order around expenditure of additional state subsidy. If, if additional state subsidy is received, and given the, the sensitivity and worry on the city side of the budget, I just would like to be reminded how that process works. The order itself says, "The board can use all or part of the additional state subsidy to increase expenditures for school purposes and cost center categories approved by the board, subject only to approval by the city council." I would like to understand in this particularly volatile budget year and the really draconian worst-case predictions of the city side of the budget, is the consultation around expenditure of any additional funds? And the reason I worry about it is because listening to the last, one of the updates that the commissioner did with the governor, there was discussion about possibly maintaining some of the funding increases for schools. So we might actually get more subsidy than projected in this budget. I just want to understand what's the step for coming back to the table if that scenario happens and the city side is as bad off as we project? So if it's best-case scenario on the school side and worst-case scenario on the city side, I just want to be sure there's an actual conversation about how additional subsidy might be used. So it might be a question for Counselor Mavadonis. It's really just a, a process question. I just want to know what that looks like.
Counselor Mavadonis, do you want to respond to that?
I can, and I'll defer to Corporation Council. If I misspeak, my understanding and recollection is if additional monies come in, provided the council acts to allow the school board to spend that money, it could be used. If the council chooses otherwise, I would turn to the finance folks, see if it would go into fund balance or not. Danielle, do you, am I on the right path?
You're right. I think that we had discussed it the last time when we added this order to the group of orders was that it would require council review and approval, as you described. And then I think it would come from the school board with recommendation as to how the funds would be spent and you would be reviewing that and approving it.
Okay, so it is a specific action by the council on a council agenda?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Thank you for confirming that. That's what I was looking for, to know what the process action was. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dusan. And we'll go next to Counselor Mavadonis.
Yeah, I'll be brief. I've already given remarks and I, I support what's before us. I, I will say I share my colleagues and I'm sure the superintendent and finance director and others' concerns about what next year might look like. And I'd say I'm committed, I think we all are, to can, to not wait until we're building next year's budget to make sure we're having good communication about where things are going. As I know everybody who's on the screen knows, and the public may not, we normally would have a city budget acted on at this time and going into effect on July 1st. However, given the pandemic and the drastic reductions in revenues to the city, we hope to have a budget in place on the municipal side sometime in September. And we'll be working on that in sometime in July and into August as a, as a finance committee. So we'll have a far better idea about what the reductions will be. And there will be reductions on the municipal side of the budget. And I'm just, I just wanted to say, I think, you know, once we have a better sense of that later in the fall, it would be good for us to continue conversations, getting a better understanding of where things are with the school budget and knowing that next year, you know, there will be, depending on state funding, there will be likely a delta that has to be addressed. And I, I think if we use this year as a model, I think, who knows what that, at the end of the day, what the discussion or decisions might be when we're getting into that for next year, the following year. But I think if we can maintain the good communication we've had this year between staff and between elected officials, I think it will go a long way. And again, I will plan to be voting for all of these orders. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselors. And I'll go to Counselor Chung.
I, my apologies if people have already said this, but I, I'm going to support these measures, but I have the same concerns about what's going to happen next year and the year after. And we, you know, in the past, we could somewhat predict what the future economy was going to be like. We have no idea, you know, during COVID-19. And so, you know, so much of our reimbursement from the state is based on sales tax and all the revenue that's generated. We have no idea what that's going to look like. There are all kinds of projections all over the place. So if possible, it would be great if we could not just continue with the conversation, but if the school committee could also, in years past, other school committees did multi-year projections. So that way we could move things around in case, you know, something happens and it becomes less of a disruption, especially to our kids. You know, it's really difficult to go from one year to, to the next to figure out how we're going to fund something. But if we had multiple scenarios and then, you know, we could work with you to figure out how to fund those things. And, and again, projections are really hard, but just ballpark figures of multi-year budgets of where you want to go or how do you want to shift, I think, to me, that would be helpful.
Thank you, Counselor Chung. And I know that we've got Counselor Cook who's on the phone with us. So we'll, we will hear you, Kim, but we won't see you.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep. Thank you. I just wanted to say thanks, as you all have said, thanks to everyone involved for working collaboratively in this difficult process with our reduced revenues at the municipal level at the very least. And we know there's reduced revenues at the state level as well. And also to reiterate what Counselor Ray has already said, which is a vote in favor of these motions tonight is really not a vote in favor of any particular funding piece of the school budget. That's really the school board's purview. And we are approving the overall budget numbers. And so I look forward to the school board reviewing what they're set to review next Tuesday. And I just wanted to say that I will be voting in favor of all of these, but it is not a policy decision so much as an overall budget decision. And I, I'm glad that the schools will be receiving essentially an increase in total budget, even though it will be a net zero increase on the property tax budget. So thanks to everyone in these difficult times for working through this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cook. Are there any other council comments or questions at this time? Seeing none, I'll just, I'll weigh in for a minute here and reserve comment on later items in hopes that we can make our way through some of these, these orders that come behind us. Thank you to the superintendent, to the school board chair, to finance director and to the school board's finance committee and the whole board. As Counselor Mavadonis said, the conversation started and the context had to do with revaluation. And then, as nobody could have predicted, the conversations quickly changed. And so I really appreciate the open dialogue and ongoing conversation. And I encourage all of us to continue that because I think that we've got some, a lot of unknowns as we head into these next months. And I, you know, I share the concern about funding being shifted into federal funds and uncertainty about what that means into next year's budget and beyond. But if we can keep the conversations open and the kind of solutions to problems shared, then I think that we will best serve our community. So I'll be in support of this order that's before us and the subsequent orders. And just again, thank you to staff, thank you to school board, and thank you to the city side as well for the support that you give for this process. And with that, I'll just look back over. I see Counselor Cook's hand still up, but it probably just got left that way. Unless Counselor Cook, you have anything to add?
Sorry, nope, that, I don't know how to shut it off. Forgive me.
No, that's okay. I just lowered it for you, but I just wanted to make sure. Okay, seeing no additional council comment or questions at this time, I will ask the clerk to call the roll for the vote.
Dusan.
Yes.
Counselor Mavadonis.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Ali.
Yeah.
Counselor Costa.
Yes.
Counselor Ray.
Yes.
Counselor Thibodeau.
Yes.
Counselor Chung.
Yes.
Mia Snyder.
Yes. Okay, thank you, everybody. And so will the clerk please read Order 182?
You've already read them all?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Just the second I said that, I realized, no, you've already read it. So we'll move right into one, Order 182, which has debt service and I'll look for a motion. Counselor Costa, Counselors Thibodeau, I think? Is there any council comment on this item? If not, we will go right into a vote.
Counselor Dusan.
Yes.
Counselor Mavadonis.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Ali.
Yeah.
Counselor Costa.
Yes.
Counselor Ray.
Yes.
Counselor Thibodeau.
Yes.
Chung.
Yes.
Mia Snyder.
Yes. Okay, I'm going to walk slowly enough so that our clerk can, can manage it all. But we'll go right into Order 183. Is there a motion?
Again.
Who was the first?
I think that was me and Spencer again.
Counselor Costa, Counselor Thibodeau, is there any council comment? I don't see any on this item. And so we'll go straight to a vote.
Counselor Dusan.
Yes.
Counselor Mavadonis.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Ali.
Yeah.
Counselor Costa.
Yes.
Counselor Ray.
Yes.
Counselor Thibodeau.
Yes.
Counselor Chung.
Yes.
Mia Snyder.
Yes.
Order 184, do I have a motion?
Move passage.
Second.
Second.
Costa with a second by Counselor Ray. Is there any council comment? I don't see any. And whenever you are ready, Kathy.
Counselor Dusan.
Yes.
Counselor Mavadonis.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Ali.
Yeah.
Counselor Costa.
Yes.
Counselor Ray.
Yes.
Counselor Thibodeau.
Yes.
Counselor Chung.
Yes.
Mia Snyder.
Yes.
Okay, Order 185, is there a motion?
Move passage.
Second.
Counselor Costa with a second by Counselor Dusan. Is there any council comment? Seeing none, we will go for a vote.
Counselor Dusan.
Yes.
Counselor Mavadonis.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Ali.
Yeah.
Counselor Costa.
Yes.
Counselor Ray.
Yes.
Thibodeau.
Yes.
Counselor Chung.
Yes.
Mia Snyder.
Yep, yes. Sorry. Order 186, do I have a motion?
Move passage.
Again.
Counselor Costa with a second by Counselor Ali. Is there any council comment? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote.
Counselor Dusan.
Yes.
Counselor Mavadonis.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Ali.
Yeah.
Counselor Costa.
Yes.
Counselor Ray.
Yes.
Counselor Thibodeau.
Yes.
Counselor Chung.
Yes.
Mia Snyder.
Yes.
Order 187, do I have a motion?
Move passage.
Counselor Mavadonis with a second by Counselor Ray. Is there any council comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll go straight to a vote.
Counselor Dusan.
Yes.
Counselor Mavadonis.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Ali.
Yeah.
Counselor Costa.
Yes.
Counselor Ray.
Yes.
Counselor Thibodeau.
Yes.
Counselor Chung.
Yes.
Mia Snyder.
Yes.
Thank you to the superintendent, school board chair and finance director from the schools